Good evening, everyone. We will call this meeting to order and welcome everybody here tonight to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Vales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Duer.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. Now I'll turn the meeting over to Councilmember Curran for a second.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Everybody will rise, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
This past week, our regional community was faced with a very sad circumstance up in Dart County, as many of you know. Some 22 students and a young man in that group lost his life in a bus auto accident. And this morning, the funeral at 11 o'clock took place, and I'd asked for a moment of silence for Aiden Clark and the Clark family. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have an agenda before us this evening. Any changes?
Move we approve the agenda, Your Honor?
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have several sets of minutes to approve this evening, and so we'll start with July 22nd, which is the council management strategy meeting. Any comments?
Move to approve the council management strategy minutes of July 22nd, 23.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from July 22nd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is July 24th, regular council meeting. Input? Motion?
Motion to approve regular council meeting minutes of July 24th, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from July 24th, the regular council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the August 14th meeting, which is a work session. Any input?
Move to approve the work session of August the 14th, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from August 14th, work session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have the August 14th, regular scheduled meeting. Anything?
Move to approve regular council meeting minutes of August 14th, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the regular council meeting on August 14th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have a very special pre-scheduled speaker this evening, our own Erin Harris. Good evening, Erin.
Good evening, everyone. I am pleased to be here to share with you a little bit about our recreation programs and events, kind of share with you what we do in the recreation side of parks, recreation and culture, as well as how we do it, and an update for how our summer went. So, the first thing I thought we'd start with is our mission. This is the mission of our entire division. It's to deliver recreational experience that enhance our quality of life. This is pretty broad and can encompass a lot of things. I always think about in recreation, these are the programs and events that we put on. Of course, our parks are open and have many opportunities for families to enjoy without us planning something for you there. These are the things that we've planned for you. So, several events. Please remember that I've listed a lot of events and programs in this presentation, and it is no way an all-encompassing list. Things change every year, things change each season, as well as we're always taking resident feedback and customer feedback from our patrons, and updating programs and events throughout the year and throughout the years. So, in all year round, we have events. In the spring, some of our main events are Soren to Spring, our Golf Scramble, our Memorial Day Ceremony. In the summer, everybody's favorite concert series, our Fourth of July Celebration. And this year, we partnered up with the Police on National Night Out. In the fall, we put on our Fishing Derby. We do Try a Truck, which is always a big hit. And we have our Veterans Day Celebration. And in the winter, we have our Winter Welcome Program at Whartonshire Park, and the park all decorated, and Santa visits us. And we also host a snowman contest that happens all around the community, and people participate So, when I go into programs, we have a ton of things that I consider a program. It's not really an event, but a whole different variety of activities. So, all ages, from birth to the end of life, we program. And we have different activities, like fitness programs, art programs, music, athletics, think about your athletic leagues. We run adult leagues, as well as youth instructional programs, different educational programs, adventure-based programs like archery and kayaking, martial arts, dance, and the list goes on. I've listed a few examples under each category there, and some things can go in multiple categories, but we do all sorts of programs that enhance quality of life, and that we hear from people and from our master plan, which was all based on resident feedback, of what they want to see and what they want to participate in. So, how do we do it? How do we put on all those different programs and events? You might be aware that our staff isn't huge. I am the one full-time person that is dedicated to recreation programs and events. We have a part-time staff member, Shawna Tibbs-Sargent, who is also dedicated to recreation. We share her, she's part-time, and we share her between the recreation, all-ages side and the senior center side. So, she's really like quarter-time in what my presentation is about tonight. And then we also have support from a whole bunch of other city staff, our Superintendent of Parks, Kim Farrell, our Assistant Superintendent, Zach Wyke, and our Secretary, many of you know Jackie Dell. She actually runs the place. We also have a whole, some maintenance staff, I shouldn't say a whole bunch, we have five full-time and two-part-time and several seasonal maintenance staff members in our division. And we also enlist help from staff from other divisions. In that photo there, you'll see Danielle Rollinson, she's actually our administrative person in the Public Service Department. So, we will take whoever will help us to get the job done. And then, of course, we hire seasonal staff. So, just on the recreation side, this past summer, we hired two interns and we hired 11 camp staff members. So, they really help us in the summer. All of them are gone now, as of August 28th. We also have volunteers. You all know how important volunteers are to our community. We have event volunteers that we might see once a year. We have boards and commissions, and those I list here because, yes, they do a lot of administrative things and advise council on different policies or procedures they'd like to see in place, but they also help us actually facilitate different classes and programs. Like our tree advisory board has put on different walks or hikes in the parks, our bicycle advisory committee will put on a bicycle maintenance class every winter and into the spring that we partner with them on. The Park Board does different various activities and events as well. So, those are all a crucial part of what we do. We also have service clubs that help us out with those events and putting on those programs as well. And then I list different community partners. There's a lot of community athletic organizations, the Historical Society, the Community Theater, and all of these help us do other things that we don't do. We don't do because they are able to offer those programs to the community. And we're very thankful for all of their help, and, you know, some of them we have formal partnerships with and some of them not-so-formal partnerships with, but we're thankful for their involvement in the community and their role in providing recreational experiences to everyone in Beaver Creek. And then, we have partners or contractors. I will use the word partner and contractors kind of simultaneously in this presentation, but these people, or companies, or organizations, really help us put on all those different classes that we do. While we do a lot of the events in-house, a lot of the athletic programs, the music and art classes, different camps that we offer, a lot of them are through our partners who are set up as contractors. So, I list some of them. This slide lists the ones that are larger organizations who have additional employees beyond the individual that we work with. So, these ones, we might set up a contract with and to offer, you know, youth T-ball or learn to play piano or bowling camp, and they actually find additional coaches or instructors for that program to supplement what we do and offer those opportunities to the public. We also have partners or contractors who I call one-man-show companies. So, these are companies that we contract with, but the company is a one-person operation, and they've set up maybe an LLC or something similar. And so, when we partner with Music Jamboree or Stemly Studios, we know that we're actually contracting with Dory Phillips for Music Jamboree is going to be the instructor for that program. Purple Paintbrush, Kristen Bailey will be the instructor for that program. And then, finally, we also have partners or contractors who are just people. We set them up on a contract as, on a 1099, they are the person, that's who's listed in the contract, and that's who we pay, and that's who instructs the program. So, I list some of those here as well. Mackenzie Potts is our Strollers in Motion instructor, Sandy Wright has done yoga for many, many years. Kelly Schmidt recently started doing Pilates with us the last few years. Toby Underdown has been with us a number of years now, probably about five years, doing Taekwondo. We have lots of these as well. So, all of these people supplement our programming because me and Shawna cannot do all these programs. We don't even have the skill and ability to do all these programs. We can't be specialists in all of these different areas, nor do we have the time to do that. So, all of these people and these companies and these organizations help us put on all of the programs that we do. So, when you look through our catalog, through our websites, through the in-touch, and you go, wow, there's a lot going on, remember that we enlist the help of many different people and organizations to do all of that. So, how does this work? Well, we set up a contract with them. Sometimes they come to us, sometimes we go to them, it kind of depends. We're always using the master plan and feedback from our residents to see what do we need to add, what are the opportunities people are looking for more of, and we set up a contract with them. We just decide who's going to take registrations. Sometimes we're the only entity taking registrations, and sometimes the other entity is also taking registrations so that we can get some cross-marketing going on that way. People might find out about a program through us, through the city, or through Skyhawk Sports Academy. Either way, we both benefit, and so does the person. We figure out where it's going to be. Sometimes we're at a city facility, sometimes we're at the contractor's facility. You might have seen some of our local businesses listed up there, things like Piano Preparatory School or Beaver View Bowl, right? We have local businesses that we partner with, and sometimes we host those programs at their facility. And then sometimes we're using somewhere else, maybe one of the schools, they're one of our biggest partners, to help us do winter sports, for example, or somewhere else in the community that is an appropriate space. We figure out how we're going to split up the revenue. Of course, we have a cost recovery plan, so we are tasked with making sure that we meet our cost recovery goals and make up for those expenses that we have in staff time or administrative costs and credit card processing fees and all of those good things. But of course, they need payment as well for their instructor's time and any equipment that they might be using. And then, of course, the cross-marketing. When we partner with these other groups, one of the big benefits is that they're spreading the word and we're spreading the word, so we're hoping to reach as many people as possible with these opportunities. Before I go into a summer 2023 recap, I'd be happy to entertain any questions about the first part of my presentation.
It's great.
Good.
Nothing?
I'm pretty sure you have the Taekwondo experience. Don't sell yourself short.
Well, I appreciate the vote of confidence. All right. I did want to talk about summer 2023 and update you all on how summer went as we're kind of wrapping all of that up now. We had eight concerts, that's traditionally what we do, eight concerts in the summer, usually in June and July. We estimate, now this is by a visual count each night, trying to estimate how many people are there, just under 1,700 attendees. This is great attendance this summer. We had mostly good weather, there's always a couple iffy weather nights, and we did have a little bit of that. We had one show that was rescheduled and one show that we weren't able to reschedule, we weren't able to come to a date that we both could work out, so. But we were pleased with that, and we had two children's puppet shows this year. That was the first time that we partnered with Mad Cat Puppets, and we had about 215 attendees. So, not huge, but we were pleased with the turnout there. I do want to thank our sponsors. This is the other way we do what we do. We have generous sponsors, and those included Dayton Children's, The Green Optimists, Beaver Creek Women's League, and American Legion Post 763.
Well, there was at least five of those concerts, and I'm saying, I think your number is low.
It might be.
I think it's very low.
I might enlist you to-
There were times where it was closer to 400 just in that night.
We did have several shows that were high attendance, and maybe you can help us count next year.
Okay, next time.
Erin, what was the name of the group giving out free drinks?
Oh, yeah.
There was a church there giving out Tater Chips and-
Yeah, thank you, I neglected to list them, but Kirkmont Church stepped up this year, and they said, hey, we would like to provide the community with some-
Right.
-some drinks and chips sometime this summer, and we said, sure, come out to a concert.
Yeah.
And they did that one night, and they said, we'd like to do that again, so we let them do that again. Thank you. All right. Our summer day camp, we love our summer day camp, we did this for eight weeks, we had 578 camper registrations throughout those eight weeks. Now, remember, a lot of those kids, I would say about 50% come almost every single week. And then the others, we might see just one or two weeks or something like that. But we sure do have a lot of regulars, and I just want to thank you to our campers and their families, we have many who return summer after summer, our staff, we had a fantastic 11 staff-member team this year. We were actually able to hire even one extra than we had planned on and enroll a few more extra kiddos than we had in the past. The last few summers, we had run with vacancies the summer, and it was, felt much better for everyone involved to have the number of staff and kiddos and the ratios that we desired. And also want to thank Fairbrook Elementary School for their partnership in allowing us to use their facility. The Beaver Creek Schools, of course, have been great to work with.
Erin, are these all-day-long summer camps?
Yeah. Yeah. So, on this slide, when I talk about summer day camp-
(laughing)
When I talk about summer day camp-
I'll get rid of that one for next year, yours.
Our summer day camp starts at age six years. Yeah, so six years. But the summer day camp, when we say summer day camp, we're talking about our traditional day camp that we run for eight weeks all summer long, all day long. So, the programmed camp hours are 9:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., and then we offer extended hours, so you can drop off your kiddo as early as 7:30 in the morning and pick up as late as 5:30. So, that's available for an additional fee, the extended hours. But yes, so many people are using it as a safe place for their child in the summer while they're at work or otherwise occupied.
I give a shout-out, too, if you notice the t-shirts, those were designed internally by our intern in Communications, Lauren. She did a great job on the design for the summer camp.
She did. There is a beaver on the shirt, so it's real cute, and my own 18-month-old really likes the shirt as well. All right. So then, here are some other camps that aren't full-day camps. Our specialty day camps are different, they're specialty. Each camp that we offer is maybe focused on a certain type of activity. So, with Amazing Athletes, that was a new camp that we had this year. That was a multi-sport and learning about sport, as well as life skills, physical fitness, and those sorts of things. And there were half-day and full-day opportunities, but not the extended care opportunity. So, that, I think, was a nine-to-three. The Skyhawks program offers half-day camps, so those are week-long and sports-specific, so you can go to golf camp, you can go to flag football camp, you can go to tennis or pickleball camp. Piano Preparatory School does different, like Music Theater Camp, Purple Paintbrush does different art camps, and those might be three days and maybe two hours a day for each of those three days. So, there's all sorts of different options. Stemly Studios does STEM-based camps, so you might do a camp that's all about building robots, or all about making Nerf guns, or something cool like that. And Beaver View Bowl, for the first time this year, offered a camp with us that was a Learn to Bowl Camp. So, all sorts of things, and we try to offer as many of these as possible. Summer camps are very popular in all their formats. Of course, many of you attended our Fourth of July Celebration, didn't want to forget about all the fun we had back on the Fourth of July, and give another shout-out to UES for their generous sponsorship, as well as the many other sponsors that helped us make this possible. But that is our largest event all year wrong, all year long, for sure. And then we mentioned our National Night Out back on August 1st. That was the first time that we have officially partnered with Police in doing that at Rotary Park. It was a big hit, and we had a lot of fun. We estimated about 300 or more people attended throughout the evening. And that concludes everything I formally prepared for this part of the evening. Happy to entertain any more questions.
Who's the lady that does the Saturday morning yoga? They moved out the pickleball people, and they brought, what, what's, who?
Yes, there is another yoga class on Saturday mornings. Her name is Sarah Ordway.
Oh, okay.
She was an instructor with us a few years ago, and then took some time away from that and has come back to the area-
Okay.
-and restarted that.
Very good. That's neat.
Did you sign up for that class?
If I got on the floor, I could get up.
Sarah will offer you modifications in a chair.
There you go.
No excuses, Chuck.
Erin, I would just like to say that myself, my wife, and both my kids have all participated in multiple programs over the years. It's great to see so many programs with a lot of longevity. I mean, I remember some from 20 years ago that are still going on, I mean, swing dance and everything else.
Wow.
It's amazing. The partner organizations offer so much for our community, and youth softball has me a little bit nervous, just because, you know, Bob and Vicki have been doing it for 35, 40 years, right? I mean, it's been for, it's been forever. And so, has the city thought about the future of that program? And, I mean, Bob and Vicki, I hope they do it for another 35 years, but just like to hear your thoughts on that.
Yeah. Bob and Vicki Darden are wonderful volunteers for the community, as we all know. That's on our radar as well. We hope they continue doing it forever and ever and ever as well. We know that they are interested in finding other community volunteers who are interested in kind of learning under their wings. If they don't, we've talked about internally what that might look like for our division as well, and of course, that would be a discussion probably everyone would be involved in, in terms of, do we take that on? What does that look like?
Well, I know that they had well over 1,000 kids this summer.
Yeah, it's a great program.
Well, thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you for your work. How many sports is Skyhawks running now in the city? Do you know?
Um, I don't. Right now, we're only running soccer with Skyhawks this current session that actually starts this week. We offered up, I think, soccer, pickleball, tennis. And pickleball and tennis did not get enough registrations to run the session that's starting right now. We have another session that starts in October, which we're hoping to be able to run. Tennis, pickleball, and flag football will take the place of soccer. So, Skyhawks, we do the contract quarterly. Sports kind of work that way, fall sports, spring sports, winter sports. So, it just kind of depends on registration. I will say our registration, not just with Skyhawks, but our registration numbers, without me having numbers in my pocket right now, feel a little down this year in terms of some of the classes, not just sports, all of our classes.
Appreciate it, thanks. Your numbers have jumped up in Senior Citizen Center, too.
Yes.
Wow.
Senior numbers are not down. Senior numbers are not down, yeah. The numbers for our families.
Boy, it's tremendous.
In terms of numbers, would you say that the numbers are down lower than pre-COVID, or did they spike during COVID and now they're averaging back out?
I think the latter. I think we saw a spike during COVID, and we rode that longer than anyone anticipated, like that spike stayed. We all kind of thought when things came back in '21, we're like, whoa, everyone wants to do everything, and we thought that would dip back for '22, and it didn't for '22. I think that now it is, and I have some other theories on what might be impacting our families and their dollars as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, Erin, as always, it's always a pleasure to hear from you, and you do such, you and I work close together on, at least twice a year, and it, and you just keep me out of trouble each time, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And this was Mayor's fault that you had to go up here. He said not too-
That's fine.
Too long ago, he said, I think we need to know more about that, and I said, we'll get on that.
Yeah, I think I remember that conversation when that started.
Right. I will say-
You weren't supposed to say that.
Oh, whoops. I was going to say, though, for council and help me out, Erin, the second meeting, the actual second televised meeting, the last meeting of the month, next month will feature Zach Wyke, Assistant Superintendent, and he's going to be focusing on more of the structure, the trees, the-
Yeah, parks operations and maintenance.
Parks operational and maintenance part. And then, so that takes September, and then the last meeting in October will be, are you, Tyler?
Back.
You'll be back? The Senior Center will be the focus on what's happening at the senior. So, we have a Parks focus the next three months on presentation, so, thank you, Erin, appreciate it.
Yep, I'll be back up here in a little bit, too, for you guys.
All right, thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda is a public hearing, PC 23-6.
Excuse me, ordinance number 23-19, an ordinance amending Chapter 158 by making certain additions, deletions, and changes to various sections of the zoning code in accordance with Chapter 158.175.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, council members, all members of the city council. The case you have before you is, again, PC 23-6, it's a periodic update of the zoning code, as council may be aware. All throughout the year, you know, we get questions and concerns and find loopholes or find quirks in the zoning code, so we kind of, we take a list of all those, and then about once a year, we come bring that as a comprehensive list. And with this update, we took this to city council, or planning commission, actually last month. There were many minor changes, such as the definition of family cemetery. It actually came up that someone wanted to bury a loved one in their yard in a neighborhood, on a quarter-acre lot, and that was kind of nervous there for a little bit, but we found Ohio law that didn't allow it, so we prevented it. But we want to make that clear going forward, that it has to be in an A1 district on 10 acres or more, so a family settler cemetery. We defined limited production in there because there's some instances, such as resident sciences down at the former vineyard, where they're going to, they're not true research and development, where they're just making prototypes. They're also on a very limited scale manufacture some stuff that they can send, but it's not an assembly line, it's very small amounts, five, six products, but they're big enough to ship them out all over the country, but that, so there was a, there was only production line, and then there was no production, so we kind of wanted to bridge that gap with the really small, limited production. Other thing we wanted to do was, in like specific site plans, there's a two-year, there's a two-year sunset clause, so to speak, after two years. And the same thing with AZRA general plans, but- thing with AZRA general plans. But when it came to modifications, specifically site plan modifications or AZRA modifications, there was no, um, no sunset on the books. So we, we extended those, um, sunsets out to the, the modifications as well because the whole intent is when somebody plans something, say in 2023, uh, that as we update the zoning code as, um, planning practices and in community input and, and desires change, we want to make sure that they can build something that's five, six, seven years ago and, and not quite up to our current standards or, or something like that. So we want to make sure that the modifications also stay, stay current with our current standards. Um, we did some changes on the fence organ, uh, fence regulations where you can put, um, you can encroach on your rear yard if you abut a major thoroughfare, the thoroughfare is your part of your rear yard where you can encroach that six-foot privacy fence by 20 feet where in a normal it has to be back 40 feet, but you can encroach by 20 feet if you plant landscaping along and help buffer that, uh, help screen that fence so that you can have a little bit more of your backyard, even though we technically call it a double frontage lot or another front yard where most people in that would consider that, that backyard. Also, we made some changes on, on how you can repair fences and how, and definitions on what a repair is and, and allowing the, uh, non-conforming six-foot fence that we just talked about. If it's there then, and their neighbors all have them, then there's no reason for them to have to drop down to the four foot. Um, just so there's a, a, you know, a congruency of the, of the fence line along those major thoroughfares. Um, we also, um, did some minor changes in the table of permitted uses such as adding, uh, we added a definition of a truck stop and then added a truck stop in only B4 and I-1 districts, um, because there's a lot of B3 districts where that just wouldn't be appropriate. There's no definition of it now. So the closest thing was, um, commercial parking lot and that's, that's allowed in a B3. So we wanted to really define that and make sure that we're, um, allowing those in locations that are very specific and, and not near any kind of residential properties. Um, but I took this to planning commission. Actually, city council has seen all these proposed changes at a work sessions a few months ago. Um, so there hasn't really been any changes since then. Planning commission recommends approval. Um, and staff recommends approval. This being an ordinance, um, obviously it would go to a second reading, but staff's recommending that this be moved on to, to the second reading. I'm happy to answer questions following a public hearing. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. And this is a public hearing. So is anyone present tonight that would like to address council on this, uh, zoning change? Seeing none, we will close the public input. Is there, are there any questions from council?
I'd have a, just a comment. Uh, I appreciate all the work that you did, Randy, and I also appreciate the dialogue that we were able to have in those work sessions and how you translated that into the code makes sense. So thank you.
Yeah. Likewise, I'd like to share thank you for your keen eye for detail. Uh, we've been talking about some of these issues for a long time and you've tracked it very, very nicely and explained it. So, um, much appreciated there. I think I have two very minor questions, but I think I can probably ask those, those later. Uh, I think it's more kind of, uh, nuances to the family cemetery. And I think you cleared up one of my big questions just in your introduction. So-
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Get my steps in.
All right. The, to accomplish this zoning code change, uh, we need to approve ordinance 23-19. You'll have a motion.
Move to, uh, ordinance 2319 to a second reading, Your Honor.
Second. I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 23-19 on to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is, uh, ordinance 23-20.
Ordinance 23-20. An ordinance by the Beaver Creek City Council repealing the current section 73.30, speed limits of the codified ordinances of the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, the BCO, and adopting a new section 73.30, speed limits of the BCO to modify and update regulations pertaining to speed limits in the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio to conform with recent changes in Ohio Revised Code, Section 4511.21, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I think Mr. McHugh and I are probably going to do this in partnership. Would you like me to do the agenda item first?
Sure.
Mr. McHugh?
Go ahead, Chief.
Um, back on April the 4th of 2023, the Higher Vice Code changes went into effect for the speed limit section, which is a higher vice code 451121. Our corresponding codes under the codified ordinances is 73.30. An ordinance by the Beaver Creek City Council repealing the current section 73.30, speed limits of the codified ordinances of the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, and adopting a new section of 7330, speed limits to modify and update the regulations pertaining to speed limits to conform with the recent changes made in April from the Higher Vice Code, Section 451121. Um, and we're recommending adoption of this ordinance as it conforms to the changes. Uh, it's namely the penalty section. Um, most traffic citations, minor misdemeanor traffic citations are minor misdemeanors. The Higher Vice Code was changed where some of those minor misdemeanors are automatically will become fourth degree misdemeanors instead of having to have one in the previous 12 months. The first offense is automatically a fourth degree misdemeanor. And those changes basically took effect into where if you operate a vehicle faster than 35 miles per hour in a business district of a municipality, faster than 50 miles per hour in other portions of the municipality, and faster than 35 miles an hour in a school zone, uh, when a school zone is actually active. Typically those were, if you didn't have any prior offenses were minor misdemeanors, they're automatically a fourth degree misdemeanor now. So we're just adhering to the changes, uh, in the Higher Vice Code.
Okay. Uh, yes. And just one other thing on the school zone. It's actually during the schools opening and closing hours. So that's kind of an important point. And, um, obviously if there's an interstate going through, that this wouldn't apply. But the, the intent of this is to effectively, what the state has done is said, if you're in excess of this speed, there's no longer going to be a misdemeanor on your first. This is going to be a, a fourth degree misdemeanor.
Yeah.
Um, and the point of all this to make it as an emergency is so that the city's code will now conform to the state code. So we want to be able to, when tickets are written under our code, our codified ordinances, it will conform to state code. Cause right now the way it's drafted is you have to have a first ticket within 12 months before it become a, a fourth degree under city code. And this will conform it to say, you don't, we don't have to go through that step anymore. This will go straight to fourth. So, and you do have also in front of you, uh, in looking at it today, I found that, uh, one provision with the change wasn't included in the agenda, even though it's referenced in the caption and all that. But, uh, so you have a for you, uh, substitution attachment A. So you'll find that, uh, in front of you and, uh, it's, uh, close. Yeah. You need to make a motion. It's a second last page. It's really the, that's the big substance of this. That's the part that really, uh, that makes the big change in the speed that creates the fourth degree.
Okay. Can you, can, can somebody tell me a little clearer as to what, does it change the speed limit anywhere?
No. No. It's the penalties only. But it just falls under this-
You mentioned the 20 miles an hour-
Yeah.
-in a business district. Is that 20 miles over?
In excess of, yes.
20 miles over?
So typically your first offense in those is the way the law was prior to April 4th was a minor misdemeanor. Unless you had a prior conviction, if you had more than one in the past 12 months, it would keep escalating from minor misdemeanor.
So that the, so that the public's clear, we're not, there won't be a speed limit sign changed anywhere?
No, sir.
It is just the enforcement and the penalty?
That is correct.
Uh, okay.
And what we were doing when the law changed in April, we were just having to cite under the state code versus the city ordinances. So this will allow us to go back to cite into the city ordinances as well.
But, so, I mean, if, can I ask, I think the same question that the mayor had. So a school's zone speed limit is 20 miles an hour?
Yes.
And this says if you're going 35 miles or faster than 35 miles an hour in a school zone?
Yes.
So at, at 36-
It's not 55. It's 35.
It's 35. Yeah. That, that's where I just want to make sure we're all-
It's 35.
Right.
Yeah.
It's nothing to do with the speed limit.
Yeah. Yeah, it is.
And it gets really confusing. The more you're going over, changes everything.
Got it. Yep.
Okay. What's the fine difference, Chief?
I honestly don't know. The court set those fines and I couldn't tell you. I didn't bring a fine schedule in front of me tonight. I'm sorry.
Any other questions before we make a motion to attach the changes?
I do, Mayor. What's the, um, in Beaver Creek in particular, a lot of schools are used for drop off and pickup. What's the classification of a speed limit on that property? Is it considered an alleyway?
On the property itself?
Yes.
If it's private property, it's, uh, whatever's deemed necessary. Typically it's under, it's under 10 miles an hour.
Yes.
10 or, or to less, but that's, uh, we, we don't really govern anything-
Sure.
-on that outside of, if we feel it's reckless.
Because, you know, there, there are times when people do drive too fast along those areas.
Yes. If it's anything of the private property, if it's not, not any of our dedicated streets, we, we, we can't enforce the traffic laws on there unless there's certain criteria in the, there's really not a, if I'm thinking right, Mr. McHugh, there's not really a set speed limit on private property. It's, um-
No.
It's, it's just whatever's deemed reckless.
Mm-hmm. And, and just to clarify, it's in a business district, it's more than 35 miles an hour. Because a lot of business districts under the Higher Vice Code would be 25 miles an hour. So it's effectively 10 miles an hour. So it, it is, the intent is clearly to make speeding-
Expensive.
Expensive. That's exactly right. And also throw points on-
What's the definition of a business district? We have business districts and the speed limit's not 25.
Well, I, I think under what, what the code, what they're trying to get to is the downtown business district, which is not 35. You, yes, Beaver Creek really doesn't have a true, I mean, the mall is not a true business district. Like if you're going through downtown Dayton.
Even Dayton, Dayton is 40.
True. Yeah. Yeah. Exactly.
Which could be argued as too high, but that's beside the-
The-
Well, North Fairfield's 45 all the way past the mall, so.
Exactly. It's, it's really not a business district. So. Okay. Yeah. So they're, um, a larger city or one that, not even larger. I mean, Fairborn and Zina possibly. They could, they, do they post a sign saying that the business, this is the, their business district? I mean, how does somebody know just by the speed limit sign?
Speed limit signs.
Yeah.
That's all dictated by state law. We have no say in any of that.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right. What I need first is a motion to substitute the attached changes to this ordinance.
I make a motion to substitute Exhibit A with what we've been provided with tonight.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to substitute the attachments, changes, uh, to the ordinance. Uh, let's see, 23-20. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, before we go on to the approval of the amended ordinance, Steve, can you explain to me, uh, the logic for the emergency?
The logic for the emergency in this particular situation is to bring into, since it was adopted by the state in April, is to mirror and as sooner as opposed to waiting another couple of weeks for a council meeting, then another 30 days or even at that point, just trying to get this finished so that the officers who have been using state code can now, what they're most comfortable with is city code. So we can go back to writing. And we've done other situations over the years where the Higher Vice Code changes and then we mirror city code. So we're trying to bring our city code, so, in the compliance.
All right. Appreciate that very much.
So in essence, they've been writing under Ohio State, ORC right now.
Correct. Yeah. Or they've had to find another section.
Virtually nothing will change other than the fact that we'll have our own.
Exactly.
Okay.
And of course, then the fees stay local as well.
That's, yeah, that's the other part. It does stay.
Yeah. All right. Any other, any questions on this ordinance?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 23-20 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 23-20 as an emergency. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Duer.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes. Thank you. All right. Next is Resolution 23-45.
Resolution 23-45. A resolution directing the Green County Auditor to enter the cost of overgrown grass cutting on the tax duplicate for the properties described in Exhibit A.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just from this first slide, just noticed the red text on the bottom. That's a, um, that's a message I want to point out and I have it on every slide because it's, it's, it's our goal is not to jam anybody up on their grass or anybody on their weeds. We just want compliance. We're not trying to go out and pick on anybody. So yeah, this is a resolution, um, allowing, uh, those who haven't paid their, um, second notice of bill for when we go out and mow grass, that the auditor put that on the tax duplicates. So just wanted to go over that real quick. Um, again, the regulations say that, uh, grass and weeds can't be over 10 inches and that's, and we're primarily driven off a complaint when a neighbor or someone out in the public sees a yard or a business where there's grass over 10 inches. That's when we, uh, start the process. Um, and also, property owners are responsible for destroying all noxious weeds. And there's a list of noxious weeds in our code. Uh, just to go over quickly the process. First, we get the complaint. So code enforcement will go out and do an inspection. If in fact, we do find that the grass, the weeds are 10 inches or higher, we put a sign in the yard. Sometimes we try to, if, if the homeowner's there and we can talk to him and they, uh, we, we try that first. Instead of putting the sign out, we'll, we'll talk to them and say, yeah, I just didn't get to it, but I'll get to it in the next day or two. Just to, again, our goal is not, um, you know, damn anybody up. It's compliance with the regulations. So we'll work with them, try to get them, um, before we put that, that sign in their yard. But if there's nobody home or they don't respond to us, um, trying to talk to them, we put that sign in and you got five days to mow it. Um, we go back out and doing reinspection in five days. If it's still not mowed, we, we have a, uh, mowing contractor, um, we have our own mowing contractor under, under contract. So he'll go out and mow the properties as we direct. Um, and as soon as that's finished, we send the athlete, or the, the homeowner or the business owner a bill with the fees that the contractor charges for the mowing. Depending on the size of it, it can go from 75 up to 225. I mean, it's just a hour by hour basis on the cost of mowing, plus a hundred dollar, $150 administrative fee. So we send that bill to the, um, property owner. Um, if we don't get a response or get that paid within 30 days, we'll send a second notice and that'll include an additional $25 administrative fee. Again, we want that compliance. We're not in the business of mowing. We're not, we're not trying to make money on mowing. We're just trying to, it's more of a, trying to say we don't want to be in this business so that we add those administrative fees. But they also cover the cost that staff has to do to prepare all the notices, um, you know, do all the billing and do all the, uh, the accounting work. So if that second notice is not paid, that's where we get to this evening is, um, you know, we need to get that paid somehow. You know, it's, it's city money used to, to mow those lawns and we don't want to be, we're not responsible to mow other owners' lawns. So we want to recoup those costs. Um, so the auditor actually adds a 5% fee, their fee on it. Um, so again, it's better to pay that first. It's better not to let your grass grow 10 inches, but it's better to pay it as soon as you get the bill because those administrative fees tack on. Um, just, uh, just some numbers. Um, you know, we're, last year we saw a 25% increase in the number of issues noticed, but we're seeing a higher compliance with, uh, the owner correcting it within the five to seven days. Um, where before we were getting two-thirds compliance, now we're getting almost 90% compliance where people are nine out of 10 or, or we're not having to bill at all. And that's, we prefer the higher, the better on that. Um, there has been an average increase to mow. It's $75 an hour now. Um, if the lot takes less than an hour, it's a $75 minimum charge. If the lot takes less than an hour, it's a seventy-five-dollar minimum charge. That's just based, you know, we, we were going to lose our contractor because of fuel, fuel surcharge last year because of the cost of gas, so we had to continue that. We also keep track of vacant property registries. Those are the properties that tend to have high grass because they're vacant. I didn't fill in a number, but right now we have a, we have four vacant properties. So you could see over the years, those number of vacant properties have gone down significantly each year. We're at fifty percent where we were last year. So in all, there's twenty-one parcels in the list for assessment, for your consideration, but there are thirty-three assessments. Several of those have multiple assessments where they just, we've mowed it four times and they haven't paid for any of them. The total assessment that we would send over is eighty-four-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and again, that's to pay the contractor and to cover administrative costs. It'd sound like a broken wheel, but again, compliance in grass weed regulation, compliance is our goal. And so staff does recommend approval of the resolution in your packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Motion?
Your Honor, I move Resolution twenty-three forty-five. Be approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty-three dash forty-five. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Resolution twenty-three dash forty-six.
Resolution twenty-three dash forty-six, a resolution authorizing submission of applications with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants to the United States Department of Transportation Federal Transit Administration, FTA, and the state of Ohio as authorized under federal transit laws and state of Ohio laws, executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon project approval.
Thank you. Well, you're back.
I'm back. So, this resolution is about applying for grant through ODOT, the Ohio Department of Transportation. They have a specialized transportation program. We have used this program before to purchase vehicles. We have two vehicles in our fleet currently at the senior center. We have a fleet currently of five vehicles that were purchased through this program. This, um, item does talk about, they have two new parts of the program. So the first part is applying for the grant to provide eighty percent of the funding. We would provide twenty percent of the funding to purchase a new vehicle. We're looking for a large, likely fourteen-passenger vehicle to add to our fleet. Our transportation needs for seniors are only increasing in Beaver Creek, and we're getting increasing demand, so we would like to add to the fleet. There are two other parts to this which are new. We have never looked at before, or, I'm sorry, never been available before, and those are applying not only for the vehicle funding, but also for preventative maintenance on the qualifying vehicles. So on any of the vehicles, if we got this new vehicle through ODOT, as well as the two others in our fleet, using that to pay for maintenance costs, and that's a reimbursement program. So those are expenses we're already going to need to incur. So we would budget for those normally, but then we would be able to track those and save those receipts and submit those, and if approved, we would get up to eighty percent reimbursement, and that would be done quarterly. And then also reimbursement, or I'm sorry, match for equipment. So we have tablets that we use on all of our vehicles at the senior center transportation program that help us keep track of our rides and our trip status and how to get from point A to point B, and we need to replace those tablets. It's been several years. I think it's been maybe five years since we got those tablets. It's time. A lot of them are getting slow, getting buggy, and we need to replace those. So we would be able to apply to get eighty percent of that match to pay for those tablets as well. So that's what this is all about. And in terms of timing, I know that's a big thing with vehicles right now, we would apply for this grant now. It's due in September, and then we would find out if we were receiving the funding in the fall, and we would potentially actually get the funding. The state calls this the Ohio Department of Transportation Office of Transit, SFY twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, funding application, because their fiscal year for twenty-twenty-five starts July one, and that's actually when we would get a vehicle order. The state would actually order the vehicle for us, which would be different for us compared to when we get other vehicles. We wouldn't do the ordering, they would. So sometime after July of twenty-four, probably in twenty-five, we'd actually see the vehicle.
All right. Well, you're right. The, uh, demand is there. It's increased dramatically. You know, the, two, my two cents worth on transportation is that if there was some way, as, as we move down over the next decade, that the vehicles were more uniform, so that you have drivers and escorts that go from, they go in on a, on a vehicle, they might not have driven for two months or three months, and it's, you know, that, and you're not in the same type of vehicle all the time. They, everyone we have operates different. The lifts are different. The sizes are different, and, uh, so it would be helpful. And I know our hands have been tied in the past and probably going to stay tied, but I had to get those, that two cents. So, but thank you for everything you're doing there.
If the state orders the vehicle, will they order it to our specifications?
We will tell them what we, here's, you know, here's our non-negotiables. But you're right, we won't have as much control. Like, the last vehicle we got, we ordered custom doors, that we wanted a special kind of door. Unless that's a non-negotiable for us, we'll tell them exactly what we want, and then they'll find to those specifications.
Anyone else?
Parking spaces?
We'll need additional. Because I know you repainted that area out there as for the buses and
Yep.
Getting these, we'll need more, we'll need more space.
You're not wrong.
Was that in the traffic code change too, about violations parking in a bus?
Fourth degree misdemeanor.
Oh, well. All right, everybody. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash forty-six.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution forty-three dash, or twenty-three dash forty-six. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next, liquor license.
Chief. I have two liquor permits before you this evening. I believe the first one on the agenda is for Beaver Creek Saki. The Ohio Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control sent notification of a request for a transfer of a D-five I and a D-six liquor permit from Dayton Saki Incorporated to Beaver Creek Saki Incorporated. They are both, these locations are going to be at the same place, forty-four seventy Indian Ripple Road. And records checks required by the Ohio Department of Commerce and Division of Liquor Control were completed on the applicants and shareholders, and we are recommending this application move forward without comment.
Thank you.
Motion to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And the second one is a new liquor permit for a restaurant called Tokyo Grill and Sushi. Um, I don't know if that's a V or five, maybe somebody can help me out there that's been to one. This is located at twenty-seven thirty-one Fairfield Commons Boulevard at the mall. And again, the Department of Commerce and Division of Liquor Control sent us notification of a request for a new D-two and D-three liquor permit for Tokyo Grill and Sushi, and the records checks were completed. They were required by the Department of Commerce and Division of Liquor Control. No concerns there. And again, we are recommending this application request move forward without comment.
Thank you.
Motion to accept without comment.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Chief. All right, next, decision items. The TIRC Committee Recommendations for the Green TIF Continuation.
Uh, yeah, last week, last Wednesday, the Green County Tax, Tax Incentive Review Committee met to go through all the, the TIFs and CRAs and enterprise zones throughout the county. For Beaver Creek section, the, the only TIF that we had on was the Greentown Center TIF. There's a requirement by law that every year that TIF get renewed and approved, the payment of the TIF and the bond that is associated with the payment be renewed and approved by city council. The Turk is an advisory committee that goes over the finances and, uh, in any kind of, um, requirements that, uh, like on, like on CRAs, there's a requirement for the number of jobs it needs to provide and the amount of payroll, but any requirements that were established as part of that. And so, uh, the Turk reviewed the Green County TIF, or the Greentown Center TIF, and is recommending, recommending that city council, um, accept the TIF and continuance for twenty-twenty-four. From a numbers standpoint, um, the TIF revenue from property taxes was around three-hundred-and-forty thousand, and when combined with the three-hundred-thousand-dollar annual payment by the Green County Commissioners, um, and after the five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar debt service payment, there was a surplus of a hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars that went into the, the TIF excess revenue fund, which has a balance of about one-point-three million dollars. So that's the numbers. So the TIF is still strong. It's still making all its payments, and it has a, it has a good cushion to make payments over the next several years. Staff, along with the Turk, does recommend that city council continue the TIF through the, for the next year.
Thank you.
Answer any questions?
Are there any? Is there a motion?
I'll motion to accept the Turk's recommendation for a continuation of the TIF for the Green.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the Committee Recommendations for the Green TIF Continuation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, it is council time. So who wants to start? Councilmember Duer.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Alongside councilmembers Adams, Bales, and Kern, we had a great time going to the opening of Horizon Infusions. And so, great to see and learn about a new business locating in Beaver Creek. They have other stores, storefronts elsewhere in the area, but first time in Beaver Creek, and, uh, just great to learn a bit more about the service they provide. Also had the opportunity to take a tour of the new Onpar facility down by the Green. Um, I think a number of us had kind of individual opportunities, and really an excellent entertainment option forthcoming for many as well, I think for young and older alike, and really magnificent what they're building in that facility as well. Like, I think everyone on council, had the opportunity to visit the soft opening of the Spring House Park. Very, very excited for that, and to thank the Parks Department for all of their hard work. And then finally, I would like to thank Sandra Pereira within zoning and planning for really excellent work for many, many years here. She'll be missed, but congratulations on her new opportunity. Thank you, Mayor.
You're very welcome. Councilmember Bales?
Thank you. I echo Councilmember Duer's comments. Um, I would also like to thank the township trustees for coming here for a joint meeting last week. Um, we talked a lot about shared service, services that both provide for our residents and save us all some money, so, um, I appreciate, uh, that work session we had with them. I too thank the park staff for Spring House Park opening. The possibilities at that park are amazing, so I would encourage anyone to get out and walk around and just imagine what it could be like, because, um, it's what a fantastic piece of land. Also attended the Chamber Links event at Buddy's Carpet, um, which was pretty well-attended and a, and a fun event that the Chamber puts on, and appreciate visiting a lot of our local businesses. I would like to thank Horizon Infusions for their commitment to Beaver Creek and choosing our community, and they do have a very amazing, um, building that they've renovated. Also like to congratulate Purely Sweet for celebrating ten years in business, amazing gluten-free treats. And then, um, I too today with Councilwoman Schwartz visited Onpar Entertainment and was blown away by the scope of the operation that we will be able to enjoy in mid-October. Their investment in that property, um, I didn't share anything, but it boggled my mind when I walked through that, that place, and, uh, so I look forward to going back in mid-October after they're open, and of course, would encourage all of us and all of our residents to do so. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Kerr?
Thank you, Your Honor. I too had the opportunity, I think, a high point there being the ribbon cutting at the new park. I think it was fantastic, and would echo comments of, uh, Councilmember Bales about the challenges. Uh, it's a beautiful park, an opportunity for people to get out and really be in a very rustic situation in a, in a, in an urban area. It's just an absolutely amazing, you know, place, and want to encourage citizens to get out there and just see our beautiful park. I also attended the Onpar. Entertainment would echo everything that's been said. It's just phenomenal, all the different activities in there that one can participate in, and, uh, the gentleman's a real entrepreneur, as many of you know. Other particular businesses he started, he's been very, very innovative, so I really appreciated that. Lastly, again, welcoming or thanking Sandra for the twenty-some years that she's given to the city of Beaver Creek, and wish her all the best in the city of Delaware.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I too would like to echo a few of the comments. Spring House Park ribbon cutting, again, was just fabulous. I really do encourage our residents to go out and look at that property. It's, it's just beautiful, um, the view of the city. I, I just think that it's an excellent way to explore, and as Councilmember Bales said, see the opportunities that are available to us. Keeping on the park theme, I also attended the Phase Two Spotted Trail ribbon cutting at Dave Nolan Preserve, the Beaver Creek Wetlands. Again, another beautiful, um, opportunity, beautiful, uh, beautiful work that's done by Beaver Creek Wetlands, frankly. Um, they continue to impress, and this now connects us down to Rotary and Phillips Park, and so the work that they have accomplished in such a short amount of time is phenomenal. And so, um, my husband and the son and I went and actually did a little hike on Sunday when it was much cooler than it was on Friday when we were there for the ribbon cutting. And shortly after that, we decided to travel over to Mama's Bakery, which is now where Gigi's Cupcakes is. They had their grand opening, and I would encourage everyone to go by and get some sweet treats. I had a peanut, or a pumpkin, chocolate chip pumpkin cookie cake that had cinnamon buttercream frosting in the middle.
Oh.
That was fabulous. So, if you're into the pumpkin theme, I recommend stopping by.
Wow.
Um, I also got to visit Onpar today with Councilmember Bales. Again, just a fabulous facility, and, you know, to kind of echo what Councilmember Kern had said, just want to thank Mr. Hugh for his investment in our community. He has several small businesses here, um, and has provided a lot of entertainment value for our residents, and so we thank him for his continued investment in this area. And last but certainly not least, we won't have another meeting before the popcorn festival, so that will be September ninth intent, so I'd encourage our residents to go out and see all of the vendors there.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too echo the sentiments about Sandra. We hate to see her go, but, uh, she's going onto a really nice opportunity, and we wish her well. She certainly has done a outstanding job for Beaver Creek over the years. Mayor Stone and I entertained the foreign officers from Wright-Patt, uh, here at the City Hall, and these, this particular group had a lot of really good questions that we were able to answer, so that's, that's the key.
That's the good news.
That's the real key to that one, because they've had some questions at those things that are really difficult. Then they left here and went to the police department. Then they left here and went to the Police Department, where Officer Bromley took care of them over there, and did a really nice job with them. I also attended the grand opening of Horizon's Infusion on Indian Ripple, along with Councilman Doer and Bales and Curran. Interesting place, I think, for the medical facilities available here in Beaver Creek are amazing when you really get in there and get a chance to stop and talk to them. Again, I attended the, along with Mayor Stone, the Beaver Creek Zhenia Football Game in Zhenia, where we were hoping to bring back home the backyard trophy. Mayor Mays would not let it go.
She wouldn't even let me touch it.
She wouldn't. We offered to polish it, and she said no. So hopefully next year, we can bring it back to Beaver Creek. I, too, attended the ribbon cutting, or ribbon tying for the Purely Sweet Bakery. Turns out that the owners of that and I have a history, they go back to the greater Dayton and Maes community when I was involved with that, so. And the Spring Hill Park, or Spring House Park, I'm sorry, entire council and probably about 50 residents were there. It was hot, very hot, but after the ribbon cutting, probably 40 of those 50 people went out and walked through the park, and I wished them well. It was, it was hot that day. Onpar, I mean, enough has been said. I mean, I don't think enough can be said, really, with what they're going to offer to see the opportunities of going there. You can bring 100 people there and fill a small portion of that building. It's just, it's amazing the size of it. I, too, was at the Dave Nolan Reserve ribbon cutting. It's with the Spotted Turtle Trail. When that's completed, I don't know we'll see it anytime soon, but it's going to go all the way from Rotary Park to well north of Fairborn, that you can walk on nature trails and park, or the wood boardwalks. Was at the mall, Fairfield Commons, for the Trans Am Cruise Inn on Friday. It was fairly well-attended. I want to thank the Green County CVB for inviting us and allowing us to sit under their tent, because, here again, Friday was hot, so, but it was, it was a good. I will suggest, though, if you ever go to that and you sit in their tent, make sure they don't have the tent in front of the band, because the band is very loud. Yesterday, I was able to attend the first anniversary of another local business, Clean Eats. It's at the corner of New Germany Traybine and North Fairfield. There were a lot of people, they're getting their food, and it was, it was nice to see a business succeed. She's doing, they're doing a really nice job with that, so if you want some, not the kind of food that Councilwoman Schwartz is talking about, if you want some good, good food, it's good for you, that, consider trying it, because I had some of their food, and it was really good. And then finally, yesterday, I was able to attend, along with the mayor, the Indian, the Indian community put on a show out at the Central State, and they had a trio called the Divine Trio from India that played Indian music. I can't say that I understood it, but the people that were there were singing along to it, so apparently they did, but it was, it was a good experience. I'm really glad we went, so. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. I won't take long, because it sounds like everything was mentioned, but I do want to thank, again, the township for the joint work session last week. It was really informative and really helpful for our city and our township to work together the way that we do, especially our shared resources, like our fire and our police. The park ribbon cutting was absolutely fantastic. The people who spoke did a really great job about the passion for our Parks Department, so we really appreciate that. And there's more, more ribbon cuttings this week, so it's really great to see how many businesses are staying in Beaver Creek, are coming to Beaver Creek. It's all very positive news and great things to see, so I look forward to seeing everyone there. And because we're not going to be here next week, go Bucks for the first upcoming game of the season.
There we go. All right, thank you. And for Mayor's time, I'm not going to add a whole lot to what's already been said, but I will say at the Trans Am Nationals at the mall, Don happened to be there when I was talking about this event in Cedarville, not Cedarville, I'm sorry, at Central State, and he volunteered to let my wife off the hook from going with me. So Don, thank you, Don. She thanks you very much. But no, you're right. It is very, it's very eye-opening. They're a big part, the Hindu community is a huge part in Beaver Creek, and I always look forward to the events they hold at the temple, and so I want to thank them for the invitation. Spring House Park, I just want to echo that no matter, find a day when it's cool, if it's not this month, next month, whatever, take the family out and walk. There are three or four trails that are marked and mowed. Walk that park. You just cannot get the vibrations from that park, from the road. And so you need to take a little walk. There's some short trails, and there's some long trails, so get out there, please, take a walk. It is an amazing piece of ground. So we would love to have that done. Sam, you know, it is kind of sad to say farewell to Sandra, but she is going to work at a place that she's already been through all that. It's a, it's a community that's growing like we did 15, 20, or were 15, 20 years ago. And so she'll have a wealth of information to take with her for that community. So I wish her well. And the Onpar, I have not been there yet, but I did talk to the owner, and I volunteered to bring my Tuesday happy hour up there when they, when they opened, right, and he said that would be wonderful. So I will see it when it's open and be able to enjoy all of the things that they offer. With that, I don't think, see anything else on my list. I'll keep it short, and I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things that you already said, so I'm not going to repeat all, but the Spring House Park, we do encourage is now open. For those, what wasn't said, there is a gravel parking lot that is situated along Patterson Road near the I-675 overpass. So there is parking on the premises along Patterson Road, and the, there's a sign that has a park master plan on it. You can have a look at that, and it'll help you along with how their signs guiding you back to where the trail actually begins. So check it out, get out. It's a great start to what's going, is a great park. Fishing Derby's coming up September 19 through 26 at Dominic Laffino Park on Grange Hall Road there. Bring your rod and bait. Send a picture with your child with the fish that they've caught, September 27, to parks at beavercreakohio.gov for a chance to win prizes. And entries must include child's name, age, parent's name, address, phone number, date you want, you went fishing at the park. This is one of those things that COVID changed, and yet it improved it. This is one of the things that we didn't go back. Fishing Derby used to be just one day, one day only, and that was it. This opens it up where there's timeframe, gives families opportunity to go at different times, work schedules, all that, or they're out of town, but allows things like this to enter the competition and enjoy it and potentially win. So something, again, a positive from COVID, as far as something that made us think outside the box, and we're going to keep doing it this way for now. Beaver Creek Senior Center Garage Sale, Friday, September 15, from 9:00 a.m. till noon. Bring all, come all. Beaver Creek Senior Center, Dayton-Zhenia Road there, Center's Overflow parking lot, that's behind the Senior Center. You'll, you'll see it, but come join the Senior Center Garage Sale. Labor Day Monday is already here. City offices will be closed on Monday, September 4. As always, non-emergencies, contact Police Department at 937-426-1225. And want to remember, our next thing, meeting is on 9/11, so we won't be here, well, won't be able to announce it before it's already over. So that morning on 9/11, Monday, 9/11, we meet at the 9/11 Memorial. Program will begin at 8:40. Anybody, it's a short ceremony, so this doesn't go on probably 20 minutes, 25 minutes at that. It's at the most, but the key here is be early so you can get a parking space, or you're going to be parking at Kroger and hiking it. So recommend coming. It is always, may we never forget. That's, I'll leave it at that, but there'll be activities there, lowering of the flags, and ceremony bell ringing and a message as well. So please come join us Monday, September 11. And the only other two things I wanted to mention real quick, Citizens Academy, the first-ever Citizens Academy was Thursday night. We had tables set up in here, and about 30 residents that were like glued to every word we said. It was, besides Bill just being long-winded. We actually finished five minutes before we, our deadline, and had time for comments, and we probably went 15, 20 minutes over, just because people wanted to ask comments. They were engaged, they were, it, it just, it made me smile. I was very excited about the class. That same class will be doing the police this week, so they were energized and knew that, of course, we had to do the basics of local government first, and the city and the finances of the city, that was the foundation. And so now, we told them, now they're off to have more fun with police and public service and parks and all the fun stuff, that they'll get tours and different stuff, so. Glad, I was, they made me pumped, so thank you to the residents that attended. And the only other thing, Popcorn Festival, as it was mentioned, I forgot a slide, the city will have a tent. So at the Popcorn Festival, we, many of the council members and staff volunteer hours to stay at the tent, so come see us. And if you have questions, we'll have some display boards and some information about city services, but come see us at the Popcorn Festival at the city tent. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is citizen comment. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on any issue whatsoever? If there is, please come forward. Seeing none, we will move on. Next is an executive session. Do we have a motion, please?
Mayor, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the Purpose of Consideration of the Purchase of Property for Public Purposes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Yes. And for the public's knowledge, the, there is no action that will result out of this executive session. You're more than welcome to stay here and wait if you wish. We will come back here to reconvene and then adjourn. But at this point, we are in executive session. Thank you.